Has this meeting been publicly noticed?
Yes, it has been noticed in accordance with law.
Wonderful. Moving on to item four, special order of business, of which there are none this evening. Item five, consent agenda items. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move second.
All right, trustee, motion by trustee Warren, seconded by trustee Ursink. Is there any discussion? Trustee Stokbrand.
I'd like to remove item B as in Betty.
Item B is in Betty. All right, trustee Arndorfer.
Yeah, I'd like to remove, sorry, scroll through item.
Five E. I'm guessing.
That's right, yes.
I was gonna guess that one too.
All right. That's good. All right. Any other discussions? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, with the exception of five B and five E, raise your hands or show your voice. Hi. Okay, trustee Backhorst.
Hi, sorry, my video isn't working for some reason.
No problem. So, motion carries. Moving on to item six, items removed from the consent agenda. That gives us five B as in Betty, consider regular village board minutes, November 15th, 2021. Trustee Stokbrand.
Thank you, President Mckay. I just wanted to ask if we could please insert, I believe we kept the prices in for the items on page 278 of the packet. We kept in the prices for things that we left in the budget, but not the ones that we removed. But so the DPW Gator was 9,000, and then the DPW tuck pointing was 10,000. And I'm just asking if we could have those inserted as well, because the other ones all have a price. For people reading the minutes, it might be helpful. Just transparency. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to include those prices if that's what you would like. Is that helpful?
Please.
I move that we add $9,000 to the Gator price and $10,000 to the DPW tuck pointing price.
A second.
All right, motion by trustee Stokbrand to approve the minutes as amended, seconded by trustee Warren. All those in favor? Or any further discussion? Okay, all those in favors, hands or voice?
Hi.
Okay, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to five E, consider Sherwood today printing service agreement with the Fox company. Trustee Arndorfer.
Yes, due to my affiliation with the person involved with Sherwood today, I'd like to recuse myself of this.
Thank you for that. Is there anyone who would make a motion to approve the Sherwood today printing service agreement with the Fox company or an alternate?
So. I'd like to make the motion.
All right, motion by trustee Ursink, seconded by trustee Warren, to approve the Sherwood today printing service agreement with the Fox company as presented. I'm sure there's a, not to, there's a price in there. Does anyone want to read the motion?
You want me to read it since I made the motion, or would you like to?
Yeah, trustee Ursink, if you have it, that would be great.
Thank you. I move to authorize staff to enter into a service agreement with the Fox company to perform printing services for Sherwood today, not to exceed 34,000 for 2022.
Thank you. So, any discussion regarding that motion? Seeing none, let's do a roll call vote on this, please.
Trustee Arndorfer is excused or recused for this vote. Trustee Backhorst.
Yes.
Trustee Ursink.
Yes.
Trustee Moore Baldoff.
Yes.
Trustee Stokbrand.
Hi.
Trustee Warren.
Hi.
President Mckay.
Hi.
Motion carries. Six, zero, one, recused.
Thank you. That concludes item number six. Moving on to item seven, public hearings. There are none this evening. Moving on to item eight, citizens to be heard. This item is for matters not on the agenda, but items may be taken action later at a future meeting. Is there anyone, any members of the public who would like to be heard this evening? Yeah, I'm not seeing a lot of members of the public.
I don't see anyone with their hand raised.
All right, thank you. So we will close that item, citizens to be heard. Moving on to item nine, new business. Nine A, consider selection of CodaMetrix and Duncan Associates for consulting services related to a hybrid form-based code zoning update in a contract not to exceed $48,900. I'm going to hand this to Director Greepentragg to present.
Thank you, President Mckay. So as a matter of brief overview or summary from the memo that was provided in your packet, a zoning review inclusive of site development standards has been a plan commission initiative for several years. The Plan Commission prioritized an update to the comprehensive plan, which was adopted earlier this year, correct? And as a follow-up to that, the Plan Commission has, is seeking to now go ahead with that update. The comprehensive plan also did recommend that we seek a form-based code update. And so the village, the Plan Commission developed a, an RFP for that process. And the village board confirmed and approved that RFP, making clear that it was to be a hybrid form-based code, so inclusive of use standards. That was, that was approved in September of this year. We did publish that notice, and we received three responses, two of which the selection committee found to be highly qualified and valued for interviews. And so we did interview those consultants. The selection committee was, was a narrow group of a member of the Plan Commission in the form of President Mckay, and a member of the design review board in the form of Chairman Scott Cronky. We reviewed the proposals and recommended to interview both of those firms. The firm from CodaMetrix and Duncan Associates was the top scoring selection from the, from the committee. We thought that their, their proposal was the most focused, was very customer service driven. It had the most direct contact between us and the consultants. And importantly, but not so importantly, but also importantly, met the project budget. So of the two firms that were proposed, we did recommend that this Plan Commission consider that. Contract team, apologies for not including this within my packet, but the Plan Commission did meet in the end of November to review the selection committee's notes and, and further provide recommendation. By a vote of four to one, with one person recused, the Plan Commission supported Plan, the selection committee's decision to recommend the firm from CodaMetrix and Duncan Associates. There were several questions within the meeting, particularly related to how public participation was going to be handled, not knowing the future of COVID or other public meetings. There was a definite desire for in-person meetings, if possible. I reminded the committee or the Plan Commission that the proposal from CodaMetrix and Duncan Associates did provide the opportunity for those public meetings, if available. The firm is, the firms are both out of, just north of Chicago region. And so there were some questions on that. And then there was also a request for, if possible, for the consultants to come to tonight's meeting to answer any questions. We do have Kirk Bishop from Duncan Associates on the call here tonight. Leslie Oberholzer from CodaMetrix had a prior engagement. So if there's any further questions on either their proposal or the project itself, I'm both myself and Kirk are here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Bart. One small change, I believe the vote at Plan Commission was four in favor, one voted no, and one abstained. Is that what you said? I might not have heard them.
Yep, that, that is definitely true. So if I didn't say that correctly, I apologize, but that, yep, it was four to one with one recusal.
Okay. And then, I believe trustee Stokbrand submitted some questions in writing that have been answered by the consultants, and we received those via email later this afternoon. But at this time, I will allow any questions or discussion from the village board. Okay. Are there any members of the public who would like to be heard on this matter? Hold on, Kathy, I'll wait till.
Can you, are you gonna let Kathy, like, I would like to know what Kathy's questions were. Are you gonna discuss those in this public meeting, or is that all gonna happen via email?
That's up to trustee Stokbrand. So would you, trustee Stokbrand, would you like to speak at this time?
Sure, let me just, I didn't have my questions up. Sorry, I'm, I'm on one screen here. So while I'm trying to navigate this, is the gentleman, and I guess I'll address this to staff first. When we were, I was at the CDA meeting last week, and they were talking about changing a zoning code. And the woman on that call, Susan Henderson, talked about it taking about a year. And I know the staff here has talked about six months. I believe in this proposal, the flow chart shows nine months, which not being an expert in the field seems more reasonable to me for something of such significance. Bart, would you like to address the three different things I've heard about timeframes for accomplishing this?
Sure, yeah, the six month was an ideal goal that I had developed in the RFP process. I acknowledge that I don't have the expertise to know how long it might actually take. I believe Susan Henderson last week at the CDA meeting was referring more so to a complete code overhaul, inclusive of residential districts. So just as a reminder here, our project is focused solely on the commercial districts of Oakland and Capitol. So ideally, that can be a little more focused. But to your point, trustee Stokbrand, within the interviews, we did ask the question as to whether or not that was a realistic timeframe. And Leslie, and I'm not sure, or Kirk, and/or they both agreed that perhaps, you know, eight to 10 months was probably more likely on that. So the six month was a staff suggestion, but clearly we would defer to the consultants for their expertise. We also did ask in the interview whether or not, you know, that was any sort of firm deadline with respect to needing more revisions. And the, the team was very open to continual updates as necessary to get us to the proper place. But they did think that we could accomplish that within the eight to 10 month timeframe.
Thank you. I'm trying to get the, the responses that the gentleman sent. I, I'm sorry, I didn't have that. Questions for consultants? One of my questions was trying to make sure that we, the kickoff session, I would like to have. Could we have more than just staff in on that? We have a small staff, and I just think this is big enough that we want this to be open to everyone. I believe he was affirmative on that, that there could be a way to have other people. I asked about the field surveys, how are these accomplished? How can we be assured that the various stakeholders are surveyed? We need transparency and accountability for this component. And trying to find if someone else has got those answers open. I'm trying to.
I could read, I have the answers, I can read them off.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
So with respect to the first question, the response was the kickoff meeting referred to in task 1.2 is primarily intended as an opportunity to discuss organizational and logistic issues related to the project. We completely agree with the need for a public kickoff event that is open to all, but that is intended to occur as part of tasks 1.4 and task 2. We welcome suggestions about individuals and groups that would be included in the interviews, or accurately listening sessions that are contemplated in task 1.3. With respect to the question on field surveys, the response was that the field surveys referred to in task 1.3 will be conducted as walking, driving, and Google Map Street View tours. These will provide us with an in-depth understanding of existing conditions in the two corridors of North Oakland Avenue and East Capitol Drive. The next question, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Yeah, the next question related to a press release and making sure that we get the word out on the project. And the response was that techniques for getting the word out about a project will be discussed at the organizational and logistical meeting in task 1.2. And these discussions will continue throughout the project as we work to meet the village's expectations for transparency and accountability. In addition to providing material for a project website, we are happy to provide write-ups that could be included in the week, in the manager's weekly memo, and to design posters and project postcards that could be displayed and distributed in the village offices and in local businesses. The next question referred to hybrid meetings. It says, hybrid meetings is preferred. Have you done a lot of this type of meeting format? The response was, we have conducted hybrid meetings in past projects and are certainly open to doing that as, to doing so as part of the Sherwood code update project. And then lastly, what is meant by if capacity is available? The reference to available capacity was primarily aimed at the village's ability and willingness to accommodate interactive elements as part of the village's website.
And so I guess that showed, you know, I just have concerns about participation, transparency, and accountability here. And I appreciate their remarks, and I also appreciate that I believe in task two, public design process. They added an entire section in there about the public workshops. I don't have any insight at this point onto COVID and virtual, in-person. You know, the, the crystal ball just isn't getting any clearer. I'm leaning towards thinking that we have to try to do hybrid for this, just because I, but I don't, I shouldn't even say that. I just don't know where to go on that. I'm glad that they're willing to do a hybrid, if that's what the group decides. And again, I just think that the more we can do collaboratively and organically, and include all stakeholders, including especially landlords and people adjacent to the areas susceptible to change. You know, you, you can call it what you will, but I think these people are definitely, we want to find a way to reach out to them and get them to engage and get their feedback. And if they, you know, give them the opportunity to participate, and if they don't, we will have done our due diligence. That's all I have. Thank you. I appreciate your work, Bart.
Yeah, and I appreciate all those. Definitely, this is a process that's going to be unfolding. And it looks like there's, the proposal was designed with a lot of checks and balances and ways to pivot and readjust depending on what the response is from the community or the participation levels, or just how things unfold. So I guess just to remind the, the board that the action before us tonight is to, whether to accept this recommendation to grant the contract for hybrid form-based code to CodaMetrix and Duncan Associates. So are there any other questions that pertain to your ability to take action on the, the item at hand this evening? Trustee Backhorst.
No, okay, not seeing any hands, so I'm gonna make a motion. I'm gonna move to select CodaMetrix and Duncan Associates, Duncan Associates as the consultants for a hybrid form-based code zoning update, and direct staff to enter into a contract not to exceed 48,900.
Second.
Motion by trustee Backhorst, seconded by trustee Baldoff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, let's have a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Backhorst.
Yes.
Trustee Ursink.
Yes.
Trustee Moore Baldoff.
Yes.
Trustee Stokbrand.
Hi.
Trustee Warren.
Hi.
Trustee Arndorfer.
Hi.
President Mckay.
Hi.
Motion carries seven, zero.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item nine, oh, Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Bishop. Would you like to introduce yourself?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, President Mckay, and good evening, trustees. Very excited about the, it sounds like increasingly likely possibility of working with all of you and residents, business owners, and multitude of stakeholders on this project. To work that's very familiar to us, I guess the bottom line in terms of responding to the comments, the message I wanted to convey on behalf of our entire team, Leslie and, and Leslie Oberholzer and I at CodaMetrix, is that we pride ourselves on being really nimble and, you know, tailoring our approach. What we've proposed in our initial work plan and budget is a, is a kind of time-tested approach. But there are multiple, multiple opportunities to continue to calibrate, dial it in, so that we're getting the level of citizen involvement, the transparency that you, that you all rightfully expect as part of this project. And we're, we're really looking forward to it and appreciate the opportunity to join you tonight and be available to answer any questions. Thanks, thanks Bart for your help as well.
All right, thank you very much for being available.
Thank you.
Now we will move on to number, item nine B, consider amendment to the 2022 human resources manual. Let's see, Tyler Burkhardt.
It's President Mckay. I spoke earlier at the JP&amp;L meeting, went through some of the changes. I have a bullet list in my memo where I'm happy to go through any of those again. So just want to pose any questions that the board may have before your consideration of the amendments to the HR manual.
Oh, what was the recommendation coming out of committee?
Trustee Ursink, do you, or trustee Baldoff, do you want to summarize the, the vote in the meeting?
Yeah, sure. So we, we had a great conversation with, with Tyler about the updates that they would like to, you know, that they are suggesting to make within the human resource manual, which are, I feel like, limited to about eight, nine suggestions. We, trustee Baldoff and I agreed 2-0 to, to recommend the, the, the changes to the 2022 human resource manual.
Okay, thank you for that information. At this time, I'd like to take questions from the trustees that relate to your ability to take action this evening. Trustee Stokbrand.
Thank you. So just to be clear on the funeral leave, if someone is an executor of an estate, or I'm not sure what the, they would get three days. Like, I don't know if it's okay, mother, father, stepmother, grandfather, grand. If you're an executor of someone's estate, you would get three days paid from the village to do the business of the estate. Is that a correct understanding?
Yeah. So typically, a power of attorney may be a direct family member. So for those individuals, they're already granted in our policy three days. It's the individuals where if, you know, according to our policy, is a non-immediate family member. And, and, you know, there's a lot of different scenarios that, that may be the case. So we, we felt that if there was a power of attorney, if you were granted that, and if you were a non-family member, or non-immediate family member, you should still have the opportunity of three days, just because there's so much involved with that. So that's the scenario that would change, where in our current, in our previous policy, they would be granted one day. But with, with the proposal, they would then be awarded three days.
And so it's paid?
Correct.
And so how does this compare with other municipalities' industry standards?
Well, we go off of what FMLA recognizes, which, I mean, I don't have our comparable communities and what their funeral policies are. But I can tell you in the previous municipalities I've been a part of, this has been fairly consistent. The power of attorney being a non-immediate family member, that is not, for the other funeral policies I've been a part of, that hasn't necessarily been specified. That was a case that came up in our organization, though. So as, as a department head team, as we reflected on that, we just felt that that was the right thing to do. I don't have any comparable specific information to tell you, though, like, out of 10 organizations, how many grant that? I don't have that for you today.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just wondering, private versus public, government versus, you know, is this, is this the industry standard in any way? So you have one, one situation where you know that it was to do, I just, you know, if it's, so if someone is missing, that means everybody else has to help out, right? And I'm just thinking of, you know, the impact. And so you ran this by department heads, and this is what staff is obviously then thinks this is okay. Thank you.
So trustee Warren.
A couple of things. First off, Tyler, thanks for your work on this. This is gonna sound super nippy, so I apologize, but technically, a power of attorney goes away, disintegrates upon death. So I think the, the proper terminology there is the executor. Trustee Stokbrand, when she asked her question, reminded me, I think it's, it should technically, Nate, unless you think I'm wrong, it should technically be executor of the estate.
That's correct, yep.
Secondly, I, I think that this is outside of the COLA increases. I mean, I think that this update is, and maybe this is, maybe this is kind of a strange question to ask, but is there a fiscal impact to this update? I see, I see COLA increases. I see, I see ways that we implement, kind of, we, we implement pay programs. Are we, are we increasing any fiscal burden to the village by way of this epic?
No.
Okay.
And then I'd be, if approved, I'd be happy to make sure to change that to reflect that to the upper line, right? So thank you for that, trustee Warren.
Oh, trustee Stokbrand, I'm sorry.
So I'm just curious, so if there's, if we're giving people more paid time off when they're not at work, how can there not be a financial impact? It's absorbed by the other staff, so it's not a financial impact?
Well, when trustee Warren asked that question, I'm trying to think from a budgetary perspective. So if we're planning for the 2023 budget, let's say, right? This, this, this policy change would not reflect how we would allocate funds and appropriations for salaries and wages. You know, certainly you could ask from a burden perspective of time, you know, could, could village staff be absorbing that time? Absolutely, right? But I, I could also argue that, you know, a village employee may, you know, utilize, you know, you know, other accruals to be away anyways, that burden certainly could be utilized. So I, I.
Can we ever offer, can we ever offer time off unpaid to fulfill an obligation, a legal obligation of any kind?
Yeah, absolutely. And that's what we've done in a number of cases around funeral leave. I mean, most employees will want to use their accruals if it exceeds the number of days granted as part of the program. Because they want to be paid. So, you know, certainly that's a question that very frequently comes up when it comes to funeral leave.
So you could say we're gonna allow you to use one day of funeral leave. Right now, we pay one, if you're executor of someone's estate, it doesn't meet your family parameters, you have one day of paid leave to get the business done. And if you want to take more, it's just unpaid. Is that correct?
Well, typically, the one day that's granted is typically used when they're attending the funeral. So typically, that's when most employees utilize that one day. So I think what we're saying with this, it would, we're granting another two days that we would pay to get that business done. So if you deny that, what the village would be saying is, we will, in that scenario, we'll allow the employee one day of paid time to go to the funeral, but then to get the business done, it's up to you as far as, if you want to be paid, you have to use vacation or one of your accruals. Otherwise, if you don't want to use your accruals because you're saving that vacation for another time, you would have to request that with the village manager's office to go unpaid.
So there's another option?
Absolutely, yep.
There is an unpaid option to get the business done. Thank you.
Trustee Ursink.
Tyler, could you just, do you have any idea of the numbers of, of how many times this has happened in the past couple of years of people that were power of attorneys or executors that needed time off?
Well, like I said, most, most of the time when they're in this situation, they're an immediate family member. So they all are already qualified. So they all are already qualified for the three days.
Uh, let me, I'll.
Right. Non-family, it was just that one, one occasion.
So it's happened one time. So I, I, I can't see this being a huge burden to our budget. I, I think this is the least we can do for, for our staff. So I, you know, that's why I'm in favor for this.
Trustee Baldoff.
I was going to just basically say the same thing as, as Arthur. I think this is something that we always want to err on the side of doing right by our employees because they put in so much time and effort to serve our community. And, you know, we, so many of the, you know, leave options that are offered, you know, we don't have a way of planning for, you know, you don't know how many sick days someone's going to need. You can't foresee if someone's going to be in an accident. We don't know how to account for how many, you know, staff members will have a death in the family. So those are things that, you know, I imagine just, you know, kind of even out over time budgetarily. And, you know, Tyler, correct me if I'm making a really wrong assumption, but I would assume that it's just kind of smooths itself out because we can't predict what those numbers are going to be every year. And it's not like we have a cap on how many people can, you know, take a, you know, funeral leave, like we wouldn't want to cap that or something. So I just want to, you know, say I, you know, want to err on the side of making sure our employees feel supported and valued when they are experiencing a loss of a loved one.
Are there any members of the public who wanted to be heard on this matter this evening? If there are, please raise your hand and put your camera on and state your position and, and why in a few minutes. All right. Seeing none, I would take a motion at this time.
So moved.
Second.
Could you read your motion?
Yeah, sorry. I apologize. Lazy. So I, I move to approve the 2022 Human Resources Manual.
Okay. So motion by trustee Ursink, seconded by trustee Baldoff. Was that correct? Okay. Any further discussion? Being none, could we take a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Trustee Ursink.
Aye.
Trustee Moore Baldoff.
Yes.
Trustee Stokbrand.
Aye.
Trustee Warren.
Aye.
Trustee Orndorfer.
Aye.
Trustee Backhorst.
Yes.
President McCaig.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Moving on to nine C, consider electrical and facility work for AV improvements to meeting rooms. I believe this is manager Ewalt who will present.
Happy to. This one, actually Tyler, do you want to take this one and I'll take the policy end?
Yeah, I think that's great.
Okay.
Sure. Um, so as far as the AV improvements are concerned, oh, a few months ago, we had the board approve those. ARPA funds is, is supporting those improvements to be done in all of our meeting room spaces. Talking with Marco, it took them a while due to the chip and, and just the chip shortage and some other IT equipment shortage that's out there. It took them a while to, to get the materials together and the equipment together, but they've informed me that they're, they're just finalizing, getting all that equipment together. So right now we need to make some improvements on our end in order to accommodate the improvements that they will do. And a lot of that is electrical work. So based on the workload of, of our, our DPW staff, it'll be a lot faster that we can get this done with it, with an outside party so that we can meet the deadline for when Marco will come and start doing the improvements inside. So that's, well, thanks to Joel Colsey at DPW, he was able to help me out to get the quotes. So we were able to get the, the best cost for the work. Just want to know, it is an estimate and we'll do our best to try to stay as close as we can to the estimate or under the estimate. I just put the caveat, we were not entirely sure, you know, once you start, you know, opening a wall and that, you're not entirely sure how you're going to have to do the electrical work until you do that. So while, you know, hopefully there won't be anything that's unforeseen, that the potential is there. I think that's it. So if there's any questions, I'm more than happy to answer those.
So I'm assuming Tyler, that if in the, in the event that there were something unforeseen once walls are open, that would really result in a significant higher cost that you would come to the board at that time?
Um, yeah, I mean, that would be great direction. You know, if you would like us to, if it exceeds the estimate, we'd be happy to come back. You know, as of right now, we would propose as long as it's, you know, within the estimate that or close to the estimate, especially understanding that it's ARPA funds that we're utilizing for these expenses that, you know, we would just make it happen. But if there's a certain percentage that goes over, or if it goes over, and if you as a board would want us to halt the work and come back to get that approved before moving forward, we can also do that. So, you know, that's, that, that'd be up to you as a board and how you would like us to proceed in that matter if that scenario were to happen.
Okay. I would ask that anyone, when making a motion, if you have that expectation to include it in the motion. At this time, I'd like to hear any questions from the board or a motion. Trustee Warren.
Thank you, President McCaig. I think my comment mainly dovetails with yours. I mean, as this, the proud owner of a hundred and some year old house, you can tell you anytime you start opening stuff up, things can get more expensive very, very quickly. So I kind of prefer to do it as a not to exceed. And if it exceeds, you know, certainly there's understanding that it could, and this is, this is something we'd like to get done. But, you know, I, those costs can compound so quickly and, and doing one thing can lead to another cost. So I, I would prefer to put it not to exceeds on it because I just, I, I never quite trust what's behind a wall. So that would be my preference for this motion, if we could include it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was muted. Trustee Warren, did you want to make such a motion?
I think if you come back to me, I think trustee Stokbrand has her hand up, but if you come back to me, I'll make, I'll make, I'd be happy to make a motion.
Okay. Trustee Stokbrand.
Thank you. I guess this is one of the questions with the ARPA money is, or however you say it. You know, cash is sitting there and, but we do have a lot of things that we want to do with it. And I think we do have to have some accountability. I'm just wondering if I make this motion not to exceed if I more than double the amount. I guess that's what I'm going to do. Is it okay if I make a motion now, President McCain?
Yes, please.
I move to authorize staff to work with P per power to perform the electrical and facility work in preparation for the audio and video improvements for meeting rooms for a cost not to exceed $15,000.
Second.
Great. Motion by trustee Stokbrand, seconded by trustee Backhorst. Any further discussion? Being none, let's take a roll call vote on this, please.
Trustee Moore Baldoff.
Yes.
Trustee Stokbrand.
Aye.
Trustee Warren.
Aye.
Trustee Orndorfer.
Aye.
Trustee Backhorst.
Yes.
Trustee Ursink.
Yes.
President McCaig.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. That's nine C. Moving on to nine D, consider policy direction for hybrid meetings. Manager Ewalt.
Thank you. So the village is working on several audio and video improvements in our meeting space areas to allow for hybrid meetings. While improvements to the system will be made, staff is not certain as to whether we'll be able to accommodate hybrid meetings with the staff available. Some board members have expressed the desire for hybrid meetings and should the board desire to pursue that, we must do it as a team, recognizing that there may be hiccups, unknown delays during the meeting or changes that need to occur. It's also possible that we may try it and decide it's not the right fit for us. So keeping in mind the need for flexibility, staff would like to propose to the village board a policy for hybrid meetings that would come to on December 20th for consideration. The baseline would reflect our current pre-COVID expectations that village board member attend meetings in person with the following additions to accommodate the hybrid format. Bullet one, community members may attend village board meetings virtually or may provide public comments after assessing the administrative and technology considerations from providing hybrid meetings at the village board for a few months. The board would be requested to consider the potential of providing the hybrid meeting format for other recorded meetings. Policy 32, video recordings would be amended to include the police commission. If you all recall, we began recording the police commission this fall. The policy currently requires video records of the village board, plan commission and CDA. Additional service space, server space must be purchased to accommodate recordings at the village board, CDA, plan commission and police commission, moving forward, an estimated amount of 1,500. As staff is not available to staff, our other committees at this time, there would not be recording of additional meetings. Officials of recorded meetings may bring a computer or device to the meeting so that they can have a personal view of the video conferencing platform. The official would mute their audio on their computer so it doesn't conflict with the audio generated in the room's main operating computer. Officials desiring to attend a meeting virtually must obtain permission of the chair to attend virtually and vote. Staff outside presenters, consultants, et cetera, may attend virtually with the approval of the village manager. And as would be customary with any changes in policy that we would review periodically for updates, as this would be a new practice for the village. So later on in the memo, we, we cover some of the, the legal components that may, you know, relate to hybrid meetings for your, for your reference. I don't want to go through the process of reading through all of them since they were primarily presented to provide context. But for purposes of tonight, we'd like to talk over some of the, the framework that's been outlined and give board members the opportunity to propose any modifications as necessary. It may also be possible that maybe we've taken a wrong direction and you, you don't want to proceed with exploring hybrid meetings at this time. And if, if that's the case, we would bring back a policy that would be reflective of, of an alternative approach. So for purpose of getting the discussion started, outline some things for your consideration. Again, tonight, we're looking to get direction from the board so that we can have some main components of the policy. Write that number back to you for review.
Thank you. So I think that first we need to see if there's a consensus on the board that you want staff to pursue a policy for, to hold hybrid meetings. So in other words, is there an interest from the board to pursue hybrid meetings? So could we do a thumbs up to see where we're at? Okay, we're at majority. So let's consider that consensus. So based on that, okay, thank you. So based on that, what kinds of questions or comments do trustees have at this time? I think I saw trustee Ursink first.
Thank you, President McCaig. You know, I just wanted to make a quick comment that, you know, sat through the interviews with the AV companies and, and really I think our goal was to get back to in-person meetings, but recreate, you know, this experience somehow, you know, that, that allowing our public to join meetings and to view without coming in, you know. We don't know where the pandemic is going to be in a year from now and two to five years from now. So, so having a good plan in place set up for us to go back into, to a meeting, but allow people to tune in and to watch the experience and to comment on the experience live is, I think was, was really critical, at least from my perspective. You know, we want this trans, we want the transparency of our meetings and our conversations to be, to be seen by as, as many people insured that want to see it. So, so that was, that was actually, you know, very key. And, you know, since I've been elected, I've been here on Zoom. I have not once been in a public meeting. You know, so, so I am looking forward to getting in person and to, 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 to seeing what that experience is like and to, to collaborating and communicating with everybody in person. I think that's, it's going to help our, you know, it's going to help our board quite a bit. But this experience has also been extremely valuable. I think we've, we've achieved a lot. And, you know, maybe we've achieved more here than we could have if we were in person. So, so it's, it's, I think it's critical that we find that balance and that we get, we, we, we kind of start to mend the two, this experience as well as the in-person experience.
President McCain, you're, you're muted.
I don't know who was next, trustee Warren or trustee Stokbrand.
I think, I think.
It's, it's trustee Warren, trustee Stokbrand, trustee Orndorfer.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not going to beat the dead horse here with the, what, what Arthur, what trustee Ursink has already said. You know, I think that it's, I, I think that this opens up and we, we don't know what the future holds. And I think that this is, this is a good compromise and a good start. It started, starting to get back to some of the in-person interactions. That said, you know, as of Thanksgiving, we had, we have a new variant, so we're going to have to be flexible. One thing I would caution, you know, at Northwestern Mutual, we've been virtual for, or we've been hybrid for a while. And, you know, it took a little bit of getting used to for me personally, the hybrid meetings. It just, at first it felt a little rocky, but now it's, it's, it feels, it feels good and everything works fine. And so there might be some growing pains in there as we, as we transition to this model. But I agree, this kind of throws open the doors to, you know, allowing people to participate, you know, whether they want to from home or they want to come in. I mean, there's always that nostalgia for everyone's in the same room and we're having an open discussion. And that's really a good feeling, you know, it's really good to see, to see all kind of faces in the room. But that's what it is, nostalgia. And I think it's important to move forward with this, with this hybrid, this hybrid model. The only thing I would mention that I think I want to be clear on, and, you know, I say this on a, because it's something that has impacted me over the course of the years and it would be more, it'd be a little bit more prevalent, you know, going to this hybrid model. I think we want to make sure that we set the expectations for attendance at these meetings. You know, people do go on vacation, you know, for instance, every single year I'm, I'm always on vacation the first week in July. So I always miss that meeting and, you know, it's not something where I want to, you know, frankly, it's, it's a family vacation. It's important that I be on vacation. So I just think it's kind, it's maybe it's a kind of a scope creep issue where we want to be clear that, you know, there, there's still reasons, you know, if you're on vacation or if you have a commitment, I mean, it isn't expected that no matter where you are on the face of the globe, you will drop everything. Meetings are obviously extraordinarily important. It's extraordinarily important what we do. But this, I don't, we don't want to inadvertently change the models and the expectations by changing the, the media that we're in. That's just my two cents.
Thank you. Trustee Stokbrand.
Thank you. I guess my big concern here, I really wanted to really go all in on the hybrid because I think that it's important to try to do it. But I just, I can't get past the staff issues. I want to, you know, I, if we can't do hybrid with the staffing that we have now, we have staff filling in, well, we have a clerk in training and we have a lot of important jobs. We're trying to fill a police chief position. We've got elections coming up. We've got, you know, the zoning thing. I have, I wonder if, if we need to provide more, we need to prioritize for staff where we think time should be spent. And I guess my point is, I want to know what are my choices? So if we don't have staff to do the hybrid model of a village board meeting, if I say, okay, let's not do hybrid village board meeting, what do I get to keep? Like, for example, do we need to discuss, should this be a larger discussion about the HRC? We're staffing the HRC. They would no longer be covered by staff is my understanding. I could be wrong. Conservation. They would no longer be covered by staff is my understanding. I could be wrong. Conservation is not, I don't know, covered by staff. What about I'm liaison to the open spaces and parks? Did we not get, you know, I think these are tough staffing decisions that we need to make a decision at the pol, at this policy level about we have this much staff and this is what we want to do and we just don't have enough. And so we need to decide, are we going to take away staff? If I take away staffing from the HRC conversa, conver, conservation and parks and open spaces, then do I get hybrid for village board? That's, that's, those are my questions.
My understanding is that, and correct me if I'm wrong, Rebecca, that this discussion tonight would be giving direction on pursuing a policy, crafting a policy regarding village board, plan commission, CDA and police commission only.
Correct. And the hybrid meeting would only apply to the village board at the, at the beginning until we review and and go through the learning curve of that to see what's what's feasible and reasonable as we move forward. And for that process, I will be the primary staff person working with you on the implementation of that until we get to a point where the kinks have been worked out. And the the theme here is to start small, to start small so that we can adjust and as trustee Warren related to work through whatever changes those might bring.
And those four entities don't meet without staff.
Correct.
Right. That said, there might be some challenges and that's precisely why we would have an evaluation period. So, but I think to your point, trustee Stokbrand, I appreciate that you're thinking about step, how we are going to staff in the future volunteer committees and that would be a separate issue. That we can
Be clear at this continue to staff all those volunteer, we would still staff HRC, conservation.
It's not related. So that discussion isn't part of this discussion tonight. I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I just, I'm confused by the comment.
I think we're only talking about village board meetings right now, correct?
Correct.
Does that clarify it for you, trustee Stokbrand?
I guess so.
Trustee Arndorfer.
Thank you. Yeah, I I would just like to echo previous comments. There are some board meetings that I would not have been able to attend had we not had the virtual option. So I think keep that in place is, you know, critically important. I did have to pass up a work dinner at Giannini Giorgiades, but these are the sacrifices you make. I would add that, yeah, I I think the opportunity for greater public engagement should always be, you know, front of mind is, and also, you know, the, yeah, the greater transparency is a great thing and as well as, you know, being mindful of public safety. So for all those reasons, I think this makes all the sense in the world. I know this is odd still, but I guess I'd, you know, be interested in hearing down the line what the thinking is along some of the committee meetings that might be off cycle, like some of the, you know, budget committee meetings and things like that that are not necessarily tied to a specific village board meeting, but that's something for a future date. That's what I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Backhorst or trustee Baldoff, do you have any questions at this time?
I do not think so. Sorry, I can't get my camera to go on, so.
I don't either.
Okay. Thank you. I agree with a lot of what's been said this evening and I really, the reality is we do have this technology now and so especially for staff that live, you know, upwards of an hour away in adverse weather conditions, I I really feel a lot better being able to use that flexibility that way. And I I think there the points that you made in terms of having clear communication and planning around this and also, you know, the expectation that we're here in person when we can be. And that if somebody needs to be virtual, that that's discussed in advance is, I think, a good approach. But this time, is there anyone who would like, staff is asking for a motion to direct staff to craft a policy, et cetera? The motion is in our packet. Is there anyone who would like to make such motion?
I can, I can do it.
President McCag, before we do that, could I just throw in a quick, a quick suggestion?
Yes.
I I would, I would encourage you also to give staff direction on the public participation component. And what I mean by that is whether or not it's going to be a live broadcast, silent broadcast where you'll just be able to watch it in real time, or whether or not you would want to to continue to have public engagement to allow virtual comments and virtual questions from the public and notice it and notice the meetings that way. And here's, here's why it makes a difference. If you have a meeting, a live in-person meeting that's properly publicly noticed and there's a legal requirement that you have a public hearing or take public comment pursuant to ordinance or state statute, anybody on the planet can come in and and that requirement that you have that public hearing or that public comment, take that public comment and satisfied by the fact that it's, there's a physical place where somebody can come and do that. So i- if if, but if you, I I believe if you advertise the meeting where you were gonna, you're gonna virtually take public comment or public questions, and which we've been doing virtually for the last couple of years, but if we're looking long-term indefinitely to do this when we're essentially returning back to, you know, in-person meetings, hopefully someday if the pandemic, if this doesn't turn into something else. If if you had a situation where there was a technical problem or there was an issue where someone couldn't participate that way and 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 you could run the risk of somebody saying, well, I, the reason I physically didn't appear was because it was noticed as public participation virtually, I attempted to participate, I was unable to. So if there's a technical problem, you may have to shut down the meeting and then adjourn and then come back later. So there's a different, there's just, there's a, there's a technical difference with what staff will have to do and the technical side of it and how how that all works. If there's going to be allow indefinitely public participation and questions during a public comment or a public hearing virtually versus that will be done in person and it's just going to be a live simulcast. So and I don't have any recommendation one way or another. I just want you to understand that piece of it and make sure you give staff direction on on which way you want to go.
Thank you, attorney bear. I appreciate that. And that was, I believe, in our memo, I believe. So I guess at this time, could we just do kind of a show of hands on direction in terms of was in this discussion this evening, was it your expectation that the public would be able to participate in person and via virtual platform? And if that's your expectation, show of hands or voice. Okay. Trustee Stokbrand, what was your expectation?
I guess I just see too many issues with what we've got going on. I think for us to be able to run a meeting in person should be the first priority. And the second priority should be to make sure we have a decent recording that's got good audio and good video. And I am willing to wait for the hybrid. I'm nervous about this. If someone wants to call in and comment and they can't get in and we've advertised it as a hybrid meeting and we have to shut it down and reschedule a meeting, that sounds like a really tough ask for staff and us. I, it's, I just think it's too far away.
Trustee Earthink.
You know, so just to to answer that question, uh, these, that was a big part of our conversations with both these AV companies. We emphasize that this is the direction that that we'd like, if we're going to go in a direction for AV and new AV equipment, which we've just purchased and will be installed soon. So we're going to have brand new cameras, brand new audio, all new kind of IT and computer equipment to handle this request specifically. So by making that investment, we're making the investment into this hybrid model, which will be able to, the, all of the AV and IT will be able to handle these requests. I'm not saying it's going to be perfect right away, but it'll at least give us time to work through some of these kinks and to work with with the company Marco that we've hired to to get to the point where we need to be. But but we we actually just made this giant investment and with this in mind, so might as well use, utilize it.
As a compromise, I do, well, trustee Arndorfer, and then I'll speak.
Yeah, I I mean, I just wanted to note that at the last short school board meeting, there was a school board member that did participate remotely. So I mean, I, you know, I I I hear the concerns about, you know, whether it's something that's going to work or not, whether, you know, we need to shut things down. I I I think I I want to be mindful of those concerns, but I I do agree that I I think we should try to move forward with, you know, toward the most robust plan that we can, noting if if there are concerns and, you know, pivoting based on that, but with with an expectation that I think we should be able to get to a fairly robust approach based, you know, in part of what Arthur was talking about. Thank you.
Thank you. I, yeah, I I would love, there is part of me that just wants to go back to in-person and just have it be really straightforward just because of all those levels of management and juggling. But I also realize we do have, this is, this is a technology that we have and, you know, I think it is, it 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 definitely increases engagement and we've had, pre-COVID, we had the ability to call into a meeting, but it was so unsatisfying for everybody involved. So this technology is just so much better. And I think that it does allow current trustees who travel for work as well as future trustees who, you know, know that they, their plan is to be here in person, of course, and they prefer that, but it, we're not excluding people who do travel for work and that is common. So again, I'm, I I wonder if there's a compromise of we can draft the policy and perhaps we can implement it in a phased approach or implement it with a very clear evaluation period or something. And and maybe that's some, those types of considerations we can work through with staff and the public. Trustee Stokbrand, did you have another comment?
I was curious, um, I don't really see, because there's some unknown, did I don't see a timeframe really. There was some mention about possibly late January for Piper to get in and Marco to do their work, but it seems very fluid. And so I just wonder if it would be wise to say, you know, we'll, we'll go in person as soon as we get the AV in and then the goal will be to do hybrid by like May or something like that. So that we can under-promise and over-deliver.
Thank you for that suggestion. Rebecca or Nathan, do you think that there's an issue with that approach? From a legal standpoint?
No, no, I don't.
Okay.
Nope, I don't see any problem.
I don't see any issue. It would, it, coming from the person who will be doing it, it'd be kind of nice to, to, the, the better I get at practicing that, the better off I think we might be. And there's a reason why we're starting with me and it's because it's, it's can be intimidating to other people. It's a lot of new technology, right? And so, and that's why the memo is set out the way that it is. Because I want to acknowledge that we're a team. And so I'm hoping that we can be kind and patient with each other as I learn. So trustee Stokbrand, to your point, you know, we do anticipate that Marco is going to do install at the end of January. I don't know if that's going to make it the first meeting in February or the second, but you know, my goal would be to get it in, learn, you know, how to do it, go through some dry runs and then get you guys on board. If that was the desire of the board, if you guys do want to wait, I'm fine waiting too. I'll just program some of my time differently.
Well, I think that, you know, getting back to the motion before us or the item before us tonight, staff is asking us for consideration of direction to craft a policy regarding hybrid meetings. To sum up, the majority of the board is interested in pursuing hybrid meetings. There's some discussion around the best way of implementing that, which we can work on. And I don't think that that's a reason not to take action on this this evening. And so I guess with that, I would, I see trustee Stokbrand, you have your hand up and I would also entertain a motion at this time.
I just wanted to be clear that the eight, the plan commission, CDA and the police commission are all just simulcast. There's no participatory function for those meetings. Is that correct? The only one we're going to a hybrid is village board.
Correct at this time.
Thank you.
And that's included within the, that's addressed in the the first bullet point. And I guess, starting with the theme in mind that we need to walk or we need to crawl before we walk, we need to walk before we run. So I definitely want to be in a position where we're, you know, using this pretty well. You know, at the board, we worked out some kinks. If we're going to consider opening it up to to those other meetings that we're currently recording.
So to repeat, the, the consensus of the board is that we want to work towards hybrid meetings. So a motion in that vein, if it passes this evening, it doesn't mean that there's no discussion or collaboration or, you know, consideration along the way of how we implement it. So I think that all concerns around that would, can be addressed and still take action. With that, I would entertain a motion. Tim Arndorfer.
Yeah, I mean, first off, I would just say I'd be happy to roll before we crawl if that's what it takes to accommodate all the work that we have to do as well as get it done and get it done right. With that, for the motion, I move to approve staff to craft a policy for hybrid meeting based upon the bullet points listed within this memo, within this memo.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by trustee Arndorfer, seconded by trustee Warren. Trustee Stokbrand, you had your hand up.
A friendly amendment to direct staff to craft a policy for hybrid village board meetings. Just to be specific, based upon the bullet points listed within this memo.
All right, do you accept that amendment, trustee Arndorfer?
I do.
Trustee Warren?
Yep, sounds good.
Okay, amendment accepted. Is there any further discussion? Being none, let's take a roll call vote on this, please.
Okay, trustee Stokbrand.
Aye.
Trustee Warren.
Aye.
Trustee Orndorfer.
Aye.
Trustee Backhorst.
Yes.
Trustee Earthink.
Yes.
Trustee Moore Baldoff.
Yes.
President McCag.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
All right, thank you. Moving on to nine E, consider 2022 meeting dates. This is in our packet and village manager Ewalds will present.
So we're looking at 2022. I'm excited. So what I like to try to do is give a predictable schedule to everyone because I really like all of you to have very fulfilled lives. Which means that we need to plan. So this is just one piece of your path. Which means that we need to plan. So this is just one piece of your pie. So I want to give us some predictability to your schedule. And so I mesh it up with some of the things that we do for budgetary. Um, process and standpoint and some of the, the things that are, are village ordinance outlines. Um, I also go through and line it up with. Different holidays that we have throughout the course of the year to make sure that we're trying to, to keep track of those. So. Um, we're cognizant of different. Celebrations that may occur with board members as well as the community. So included in your packet this evening is a memo and. Um, it details, we've gone through this process now for the last, at least three, I think that this is the fourth year. So in, in the items of discussion, I just call out those days that if given the village office be closed, we defer to alternative date. The one, I, if there are other items that you'd like to provide guidance on, I'm happy to hear those. There is one. Um, one meeting date, which would be next December 19th. Um, that meeting, as you recall, the board meets on the first and the third Mondays of every month and December 19th. Falls in the middle of Hanukkah. So I. I didn't, I didn't know how people were going to feel about meeting during a time period like that. Normally we, you know, I haven't hit a meeting date that has fallen during that, that scope. I don't know, um, what the board's pleasure would be. Um, so that's one thing that I know I will need your direction on this evening, but at this time I'm happy to answer any questions. And then once we conclude our meeting this evening, I'll put this in final format and then you're going to get it distributed once, once a month. Just as a refresher, not because things are changing, but just because we all need to, if, if you're anything like me, you need a reminder. Of what's coming up.
Trustee McCag, you're muted.
Trustee Ursink.
All right, there you go. Um, you know, I guess I just, just a quick comment. Is that I would love this, uh, this calendar digitized. I love this, this document. Every time you, you've given it to me like. I always like earmark it and try to search for it and try to find it in my emails. But what I'd love is to be able to plug this into like my Google calendar, just so it like, this whole thing just pops up and populates my calendar. So I could like, everything is on my calendar. That would be like a dream come true. Not sure if we can make that. I'm, I think we can make that happen. Cause I'm sure this is probably on your calendar, right? You probably have like an Outlook calendar with all of this on this.
I don't, um, I don't put it all, well, I look at this a lot because some of these dates are not ones that I'm necessarily scheduling. So I plug them in because I want to be cognizant of not scheduling stuff. During times when we know the school district's going to be doing something like it's not, nobody reports to me their individual schedules, but it's one that I've just found helpful. So that we could be more efficient in terms of how we plan. Um, so I'll, I'll throw things in there and then we adjust it.
Might I suggest, I think this is a great process improvement suggestion and might I suggest that, um, we explore it offline to see if there's a way to do it.
Sounds good. My, my, I would, I would also be in favor of, um, canceling the, um, the meeting date that falls in Hanukkah.
Trustee Ursink, can I just tell you that I'm flattered that you actually would like to have the, all of these on your calendar?
I'm looking here, most of them, I mean, minus the municipal court, most of them are, you know.
No one's overtaking me up on that offer.
So, okay. We'll work on this offline. I appreciate it though.
Okay.
Okay, since trustee Ursink, um, brought up the, uh, December 19th, rather than having everybody chime in. You know, can we just do a show of hands of who would be in favor of, um, canceling that meeting in 2022? Okay, it looks like we have a majority of, uh, that are willing to meet once in December. So. Um, okay, so other trustee Warren.
Oh, you're muted.
I was actually just going to say that I'd be in favor of canceling that meeting. I mean, if we, if we have to, we just move, we just meet on the. On, on, on the Monday before that, you just meet two, two Mondays in a row if, if, if the press of work makes it necessary to have a meeting, but yeah, that's what I was going to say.
Okay. Um, any other questions or would anyone like to make a motion at this time? You're asking for a motion, right?
Yes, please.
Okay.
I can do it. Uh, I move to approve the 2021, one, or I move to approve the 2022 meeting dates and direct staff to cancel the December 19th meeting as it falls during Hanukkah.
Okay, trustee, motion by trustee Warren, seconded by trustee Backhorst. Um, any further discussion? Being none, um, show of hands or voice in favor of the motion.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, all right, I see all hands raised and a voice from trustee Backhorst who's off camera. So motion carries seven zero. Great. Thank you. Um, item nine F, consider resolution 2021 dash 37 terminating tax incremental district tid number one. So to my understanding that this is a little bit like a housekeeping item. Um, in that the action has already been taken, but I will, um, who can I turn it to? Uh, manager Ewald to just do a, a frame up for everyone.
And you actually covered the frame up. This is just a, a housekeeping item. We need to pass a, a resolution to, um, terminate the tid. It's procedural in nature.
Okay. Um, and as you'll recall, the previous board did extend tid one, the life of tid one for, um, to reserve funds for affordable housing. Um, this does not have any impact on that decision. All right, um, so, uh, do I have a motion or is there, are there any questions?
I can make a motion.
Okay.
So, uh, I moved to approve resolution 2021 dash 37A, resolution terminating tax increment district tid, village of Shorewood to number one.
Second.
All right, so motion by trustee Ursink, seconded by trustee Baldoff. Um, any discussion? All right, seeing none, this will be a roll call vote.
Trustee Warren.
Aye.
Trustee Orndorfer.
Aye.
Trustee Backhorst.
Yes.
Trustee Ursink.
Yes.
Trustee Moore Baldoff.
Yes.
Trustee Stokran.
Aye.
President McCag.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Great, thank you. Um, item nine G, last item of new business, consider ordinance 3035 eliminating the requirement that massage establishments hold a local license in addition to a state, to state licensure. So this is kind of an interesting one. It is a little housekeeping, only that we have not been following our own practice and. Is that my understanding? But I'll, I'll hand it over to staff to frame it up.
So there is a licensing process at the state that takes care of this. Municipalities have the option to also require a license. We have had this on the books. We have not required one. Um, so we've been, not been following our own, our own ordinance. Uh, for this for as long as we can find. So at this time, we'd like to clean up the code and just require that licensure with the state.
All right, any, um, questions or emotions from the floor? Trustee Stokran.
So, since we haven't been enforcing it, maybe we don't know, but massages have become quite popular. So we don't know how many. Of these companies are doing, how many of these firms are operating in the village? I just wonder if, you know, like when a liquor license comes up, it's nice to have the, the ability to do local control. And if these are becoming more and more popular, is there a reason why we would ever look back and say, oh. At one point we had control, we could have yanked their license, but now we don't, so we did can't. I. This, is Bart still on the call?
Um, I can, I can, I can handle that. The, the rest of the code or the rest of that chapter of the Shorewood code. Still contains a number of other requirements that must be met by a massage establishment. And, uh, certain regulations about its operation. And citations can be issued for any violation of the remainder of that chapter. So there's still enforcement that can be done and we can also communicate with the state if there's any, um. If there's, if there's any problems or specific complaints, uh, that might lead to, uh, suspension or. Um, revocation of, of a licensure. But yeah, if, if, if you want to take a look, uh, I think it's, I can't remember the exact, I think it's 362, but there. Yeah, there, there's a whole bunch of other regulations that will still exist on the books.
Are we giving up a lot of, uh, uh, revenue options here?
My understanding was, yeah, I, I, my understanding from talking to staff about it when they, when they approached me with this was. That it was so nominal that the, the, it pretty much didn't cover the staff time to administer the program. It was at best awash. Is my, is my understanding. Rebecca, I don't know if you have anything other than that.
No, even if we, even if you did want to charge for it, we don't really have the time to administer something more complicated. Um, it's just not within the scope of our bandwidth.
Thank you.
And it really almost seems like it hearkens back to a time where, um, the village was nervous about having this type of business and now with. How mainstream massage therapy is, um, it just seems like a layer of. Control that, you know, isn't. Really necessary. Um, any other questions or a motion? All right, trustee Stokran.
Excuse me, I move to approve ordinance 3035 eliminating the requirement that massage establishment. Establishments hold a local license in addition to state licensure.
Second bed.
All right, a motion by trustee Stokran, seconded by trustee Warren. Um, any further discussion? All right, if not, this will be a roll call vote.
Trustee Orndorfer.
Aye.
Trustee Backhorst.
Yes.
Trustee Ursink.
Yes.
Trustee Moore Baldoff.
Yes.
Trustee Stokran.
Aye.
Trustee Warren.
Aye.
President McCag.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Moving on to item 10, reports of village officials, 10A village president. Um, I have at least two tonight. Um, appointment of Sarah McKnight to the police commission. Um, I did want to announce that, um, her application is in the, um, materials this evening. And I forwarded you the process that I updated or that I created. Via word document or something earlier today. And we don't really have, there are no requirements to have a process in writing for police commission. So I don't know. At some point we might want to put it in the handbook, um, of boards and commissions and committees. Um, for guidance, but no president would be under any obligation, I don't think, but we, that's outside of scope. But anyway, I basically looked at the composition, got input on, um, the skill sets and. Um, contributions to the commission that might be valuable, went through to all 23 applications with input from president Cole and. Liaison on Charlie DeSando from the human resources commission, developed questions with those sources of input as well. Extended invitation to five applicants to interview, three responded. And they went from there and chose to appoint Sarah McKnight. Uh, so I hope everybody will have a chance to welcome her. Item 10, oh, I mean, number two, um, it is time for the village manager 2021 employee review. Rebecca and I discussed a process and what I'm proposing is that. That, uh, village manager would develop a simple template pertaining to 2021 work plan areas and, um, competencies and goal setting for 2022. That she would share the, the template and work plan, um, with what village board members. Uh, or I would do that. Um, the village manager would assess herself in, um, anticipation of this process. And then we would invite, she would invite, um, village board members to offer feedback through one-on-one meetings with the village manager. Um, or written feedback via email. The president and village manager would review all of those. All of that input and feedback. Would celebrate accomplishments of 2021, look forward to 2022, and then if needed, we would have a closed session to review and take action on any salary adjustments. Cause I'm not sure that we have, if it's just a coal increase, if we have to take action on that or not, or it's covered by the budget. So anyway, that's the update and we hope to have that completed like pretty close to the end of the year, right Rebecca? Or it might extend over into January, knowing that the holidays are coming up pretty quickly now. All right, well, in advance, I'd like to say thank you to everyone and, um, it's been a fantastic year. Uh, and I think that that's all that I had at this time. Oh, wait, I do have one more. I'm sorry. Um, we did have a, a brief meeting with, um, Chris. Uh, what is Christopher from Dominion Properties? What's his last name Rebecca?
Adams.
Adams. Um. As you know, they, oh, um, he owns the Dominion Properties owns the old North Shorebank building at the corner of Oakland and Capitol. Um, as well as the old Shorewood Physicians Building property, as well as the, um, parking lot. They met with the village manager, previous village president. And, uh, planning director over a year ago, I believe. Talking about some potential concepts of redevelopment of that site. With the change in leadership, a year of discussion around affordable housing, the extension of tid one. This gentleman was wanting kind of a reset, um, because they have different options with the, um, site. And just wanted to sort of get, he just wanted a briefing on what does all this mean in the last year? Um, and what's the way forward? So I agreed to meet, um, given all those and we explained kind of where the CDA is in their process around this. You know, coming up with criteria and learning about affordable housing and the toolbox. Where we are as, and you know, that that is a process and it's not done. Um, and, uh, what, that really what we've heard from the community is there's an interest in affordable housing. And that I couldn't speak for anybody else, but that, you know, that's kind of what this year seems to have been about for our community. So, and I also said that this meeting doesn't take the place of any of the steps of our written policy around TIF. And so, you know, but it was a pleasure to meet him and, and so forth and so on. So, and I encouraged him to attend CBA meetings, um, especially the discussions around, uh, use of the tid funds. Um, and to review the sessions we've had on affordable housing and the, um, article in Shorewood today. So, and that's pretty much that. So I just wanted to share that, um, oh, Peter Hammond was, uh. No, no, he was not able to attend. So it was village manager, myself, um, director of reaping frog and. Christopher Adams of Dominion Property. So just wanted to let everybody know that that meeting occurred. And that is it. So thank you. Moving on to village, um, reports of trustees.
I'll make it, I'll make it really quick. I'm, I'm sure everybody is used to getting out before nine o'clock. So I, I don't want to hold too many people up. But, um, you know, I just wanted to update the bid had their annual tree lighting and music. Music mobile this, this, um, this past weekend, which was a fantastic, like just a huge success. We've gotten such great feedback. I wanted to, uh, send a big thank you to Nathan Bear for, for letting us use his, um, his fire engine, his vintage fire engine truck, which, um. Which we always appreciate and the community always appreciates that, uh, roaming around the community. So thank you so much, Nathan. Um, a couple of updates with other community stuff going on, not necessarily trustee related, but, uh, the ice rink, uh, lake bluff will be going up really soon, really excited for that. I know the captains were out this past Saturday. Getting all the stuff prepped and.
getting all the stuff prepped and ready. So that, that will be fun. We always look forward to that ice rink. It's, it's really great for the community. We've planned the, the Shorewood Chill will be February 6th, I think, this year. So that's going to be another, that's always a fun event where the community comes out and gets to ice skate, and love seeing all the, the kids and the families out. We also had a meeting for the Shorewood Farmers Market about using Estorbrook again this year, which the parks is very excited to have us use. But there's going to, they're, they're not confident that they can close it down for an active street. So, you know, I had a conversation with Harold Schmidt this morning, who is, I think, the president of Friends of Estorbrook Park. And they very much want Estorbrook closed this summer. And I think that actually the people, a lot of the people in the Parks Department want the parks closed. So I, I think, you know, if there's any conversations that we can have, or if you have, or if we, you know, we can kind of work together, I'd love to start the conversation on how we can kind of influence Milwaukee County Parks to potentially close that street down again this summer for an active street. Or just, or just blanket close it for the summer, because I think it's a, it's very, it's, it's great for our community, it's great for our farmers market, and it's a fantastic thing closed. So that's, I think that's all I got. So, thanks, guys.
Anyone else? Trustee Stokbrand.
Yeah, I feel like the town crier here, but I became aware within the last week that there were people, even on the Plan Commission, who were not aware, and I feel like it should be publicly known for transparency that the East Capital Neighbors Association has filed a summons and complaint in Milwaukee Circuit Court against the Village Board of Appeals dated November 5th. And will, I believe, as Rebecca had indicated in an email to trustees at least, that this has been forwarded to our insurer, but it seems that this is information that people should have. Thank you.
Do you have any recommendations on, or why don't we connect offline as far as sharing that information? Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Item 11, oh, village manager, you have a report.
I do. I just wanted to compliment the bid and Stephanie Sherman for really assisting during the transition of executive directors. She did a great job and and also echo the gratitude to Nathan Bear for his use of the fire truck, which was a true hit. So it was, it was a great night to, to be out. Thank you so much for all you do.
Yeah, and I'll say that was the best hot chocolate I've had in a really long time. So.
It wasn't bad.
Items for, items for future consideration. All right, hearing none, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion by trustee Warren, seconded by trustee Ursink to adjourn. All those in favor, show of hands or voice.
Aye.
All right, it looks like we are adjourned. Motion carries seven zero, and we are adjourned at 9:06 PM. Thank you, everyone.
Have a good night, guys. Nice seeing you.